Let's call the meeting to order. One minute late, sorry about that. Jerry will not be here this evening. He is on work duty in Fargo this evening. Everyone else will be here. Okay, everyone, if you'd stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You know, whoever instituted that about here, that was a good deal. I kind of liked that. We've never had the pledge up about a year ago, I don't think.
Nice to see that line.
Okay. Are there any additions? Changes to the agenda? I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Josh. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Okay, the approval of the minutes for the preceding three meetings, which will include our work session. Got a chance to look at those. If you need to take a second, please do. When you are ready, I would like to look for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Rob?
I'll second.
And Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, scheduled presenters. Ellers or ailers, depending on who you listen to. Let's square that away once and for all.
Ellers.
All those years. And School Perceptions.
Yeah, if I could just give a quick introduction of why they're here and, you know, why. You guys have continually heard me talk referendum and what approaches we need to take. And I've been listening to what you've had to say for feedback as far as, you know, listening to companies come in. We have worked with Jeff forever. And Josh, you're new to the board and freshly home from Vegas, so maybe you're not quite here yet. But, you know, we've had a longstanding relationship with their company and we really, really appreciate everything that they do for our school district. And so when Jeff and I started communicating about how we wanted to move forward a referendum, you know, he's the one that's going to help me put together those projection models and things like that. We have a really good handle on that. But what I felt that we were lacking was a survey portion of things. The schools that have been successful in passing referendums have really used companies that go out, they survey. We don't know if this falls the right time or if next falls the right time. These companies are the ones that come in and really help us. And I'll let them get into the details of that. But that's why they're here tonight, because I've asked them to come talk to us about those options. I also heard, you know, yes, Beth, you have a great relationship with Ellers and you trust them, but we also want to hear from another company. And that's why the next board meeting, you will have another company here offering the same services, but again, in kind of a different format. And again, our longstanding relationship with this company. So I want to thank Jeff, first of all, for finding a company that would work with you so well and allow us to keep with our current financials, because that's really important when you go to the taxpayers. We want to be able to have accurate information that is very transparent and we can work with them. So with that, I wanted you to know why they're here. It's very important that we understand what kind of services they offer. So with that, Jeff, or who's going first? Deb or Jeff?
I can start off the discussion. I'm going to hand out a couple things. First of all, as we were discussing with Beth, there are several options that you can look at. One is what you would typically think, the operating referendum. But then we also talked a little bit about capital projects referendum, depending on the timing of all this. So I wanted to pass some information out. Basically, your operating referendum. The operating referendum, if they're familiar with those, it is to generate additional money for your operations and establish that on a per pupil basis. And what I handed out here, starting with the operating referendum, is a narrative of that particular financing tool. And then just talking about our particular services and what you get for it. And I included examples in there. Page five shows the price list on the particular services. And our basic package is $1,850. And then page six, seven, eight, that basically shows our work product. And page nine shows the tax impact. So if you have five or six different options you want us to run, it's all included in there. We'll run them. We'll set up the tax impact. We'll come and present to you. And then whichever option you're comfortable with, we can move forward. Then we work as the liaison with the bond attorney to establish the proper ballot language. We give you a timeline, by the way, August 21. If you're going to go for an operating referendum, you have to hold them on November 3rd, the general election. And August 21 is the last day that you can call that. So you'd have to call for the special election. We would work with you on the ballot and so forth. And then we put together a PowerPoint and there's just an outline of it on page 10, 11. And then as part of our optional services, we can put together a number of graphs. Put those together for you to take a look at, those types of comparisons, if you feel that that would be helpful. Page 18 and 19 is our website sample. And we put that together. It has a tax impact calculator. Now, that is operating referendum. We did discuss what else might meet your needs. And one of the things we talked about was a capital projects levy. It is a little different than an operating referendum in the fact that it is spread on net tax capacity as opposed to referendum market value. The main difference is when operating referendum, the AGLAN is not assessed, okay? With a capital projects levy, AGLAN will be assessed the same as if you did a bond referendum. Capital projects levy, you can hold different times of the year or certain blackout dates you have to avoid, just like a bond referendum. But you can hold it. You have much more flexibility when you schedule that versus an operating referendum. It is a tax rate. In our words, basically, you determine how much money you want to generate each and every year. It's like an operating referendum. You get a cash flow in each and every year. We convert it to a tax rate, put it on a ballot for you, and people vote on the tax rate. And it generates a certain amount per year. That amount can be used for any capital items. Most people use it for technology. So what you could do is you could free up money in your operating budget by passing a capital projects levy, spending that money on the technology, freeing up money in your operating budget. So there's really two choices. This one's $1,000, our service. It includes, basically, the tax impact. You tell me how much revenue you want to generate. We tell you the tax impact. And our service to work with the bond attorney to set it up, get you the resolutions, calling for reelection, timelines and so forth. So there are two options of our services on what might work for you. Now, when we were discussing this, Beth originally called me and asked me about surveys. And we talked about various companies out there and how they approach it. And after discussions, I decided to meet with Deb Osborne and Sue Peterson's here too, to talk about what they could bring to the table as far as surveys. And the one thing that's interesting about School Perceptions, they have a different approach than your typical survey company. So I invited them to meet Beth at our seminar. What was that, week ago, two weeks ago now?
I think it's two already, yeah.
Two already. Time flies. And they are here to talk about their service and review that with you. So, Sue and Deb?
Thank you. We're going to kind of gracefully walk around the room as we come over to our things. My name is Deb Osborne. I'm with School Perceptions.
And I'm Sue Peterson, also with School Perceptions.
Okay, so we've got just a few slides here. And please feel free to ask questions as we're going along, because there's a lot of things that we don't know that we know that we're not probably sharing as much as we should. So again, I'm Deb, that's Sue. Okay. We were founded in 2002 and our real goal is to provide independent and unbiased research. We are not employees of any school district. We are the outside third party. We utilize a proprietary web-based survey platform, which is a mouthful. In essence, we write, we program the surveys online and as well as house all of the data, as well as all the surveys and responses. So we got a lot of techy guys, the background, doing a lot of programming for us. We've conducted over 10,000 surveys in 50 states for school improvement, strategic planning and referendum preparation. So we've been doing this for a long time. And essentially, our mission is to help educational leaders gather, organize and use data to make strategic decisions as they move forward with their plans. Now, we've found out that why do community surveys work for school districts? And thank you for the endorsement, Beth, as far as generally, levies and referendums pass in the polls after they conduct community surveys. Well, why is that? Essentially, we found out over the years, residents are more likely to support a plan if they understand what's going on with the school and if they had a voice and a say. And you guys are listening to what they have to say. So back in the day, when we first started, we started to do, our approach was conducting random telephone survey polls. And the magic number to get is 400 responses. No matter what kind of survey it is, 400. And then the data doesn't really change from there once you reach 400 people. However, we found out that people don't like to get calls and they don't like to stay on the phone for very long. So we eventually evolved, well, soon quickly evolved. And now what we do is we conduct paper surveys. They're about eight pages long. So, but they're not full of questions. There's a lot of room for the districts to tell their story on that piece, on that eight-page document. They can put text wording. They can tell their story. They can have graphs. They can have images, pictures. So they can really share and control the message. And then we mail them out to every single person in the district. We are all-inclusive. We don't feel that with random telephone surveys, you miss the guy that's got the voice and he doesn't like that. This way, everyone is involved and feels like they're part of this whole process. We also, when we mail the survey out, we include a little code in there that is unique to every single person that gets it. So nobody can take a survey twice. Therefore, our data is very valid. It's, for example, if there's a bunch of hockey parents that want that sports arena, they can't stack and keep, you know, they can only, just like everybody, they can only answer the survey one time. Any questions?
So the important thing I want you to think about is we help districts. My background is really in strategic communications and in school district communications. But as you think about preparing for a referendum, as I look at this little circle chart, I always think that first we need to get it into their hands, that we need to move that information into people's hearts and then they vote with their hand, right? So think about how are we going to get people that information, make sure that they understand that it's objective, incredible, and then we build support. And after you've built support, you've built trust and people are usually, they're then more supportive of passing or, you know, supporting a referendum. And again, this is just another piece of, you know, that community engagement process is what's really going to be important in your entire communication plan as you really move to almost a get out to vote. Like, we need to give people information. Where are we at? How did we get here? What are all the things that we've done about it? Have we looked under every rock? Have we looked at ways we could cut? Are we being good stewards of your dollars? And then how do we push that information out? One of the things that we ask in the survey is, how do you get information? How would you like to get information from the school district? All right, so what does this process look like? Because it's, it could seem like, oh, you're just going to give us a CAM survey. It's the same survey you use in every district all around the country. And I can guarantee you, that's not true. So where we work with either a team of people from a district, we usually have web meetings that we log on through a website and it feels like you're sitting right next to people. And we ask a lot of questions about, tell me about your district. And I ask a lot of questions so that I can figure out, how can I create a story so that people understand your school district? Remember, what percentage of your voters have kids that are in school? Not everybody, right? Probably 20 to 30 percent if you're lucky. So how do we make sure that they know about that information? Because what percentage of your population says, when I was in school, straight learning rows were fine, right? We didn't need all this technology. We didn't need hands-on education. All of those things. So how do we tell that story? And then we look at, again, other questions we asked that Beth, or Deb talked about, as far as who are those six or seven other districts that you compare yourself to? So that we can create different charts and graphs so that they can look at, we're not alone. We're not the only people going through this. Or we're a better steward of the tax dollar than our neighboring district. Okay, so when you get this crazy survey in the mail, what does it look like? It starts out with some sort of a opening letter that says, we're, you know, such and such a school district that really believes in our strong values and work ethic. And then we start telling the story about since whatever year, we've been struggling with our budget, just like everybody else. Here are the things we've already done. I bet if you asked 80% of your population before they read this letter, they wouldn't be able to answer that question. They wouldn't know, oh my gosh, you've cut this many positions? Oh my gosh, this has happened. It's again, a way for us to educate the community about what's going on in your school. And even if people don't ever take the survey, you've just had a great opportunity to educate them. This is just another example of what it looks like. And then you'll see there's that survey code on there. So you can either take it by paper and mail it in or you'd have a survey access code that you can go online and you punch in your little number. And then, you know, it ends up in our system. We ask questions about what township? Where do you reside? So this is who, Manitowoc. So we've got them from all over. Where do you reside? Do you have, are you an employee? Are you a parent? What, where do your kids go to school? And this is our favorite one. What relationship do you have with the school district? You know, I volunteer. I'm a graduate. The grandparent one, I think it's funny. And the reason we had to add that box is parents just, or people kept writing that in. Well, I'm not a parent, but I'm a grandparent. So we want to just create that sense of, I have a relationship with the school. And then we start asking a few questions. And again, is this really about, do we need their information? Some of it. But is it also an opportunity for us to educate people? If you don't have kids in school or you have kids in school but they're not interested in STEM, you probably don't know anything about what Project Lead the Way is. So it's an opportunity for us to say, if you've got a preschooler or a three-year-old, oh my gosh, they're concerned about my kid's technology, engineering, science careers? That's awesome. Yeah, we need to make sure we do that. They're worried about a health science academy or a Montessori education? That's great. So opportunities, again, that education piece, but telling your story of, look at all we do. And then after we've done some educating, we start asking a lot of questions. And this is great, because these always test really well and they build your case for a referendum. So they're going to say, oh, our typical class size is 18 to 26 for elementary school, or whatever your numbers are. Should we increase class size? Well, it only takes one person to visit a first grade classroom that's got 26 kids in it for them to say, what? Are you nuts? Don't increase class size. Same thing with our middle school, elective offerings. And then one that tests horribly, should we, you know, should we start charging athletic fees? You know, so people will, do you charge fees already?
Oh, we charge crazy fees.
Do you? Okay. Well, in some communities, that doesn't test well. Or should we increase the bus routes and longer ride times and have fewer routes? So then we create these charts. This is where we work with a financial institution and create these charts. So here's where we are. So you see, this was a, this was Manitowoc survey. So we were able to look at, oh, look at, we're already low. And even when we, if you answer yes to all three of our questions, we'll still be lower than all those we compare ourselves to. That's a pretty good story. And again, they may not even take the survey. They might look at the cute little chart and throw it away. But we've educated them. And then we start asking some questions. And this is what helps you build your referendum question. Would you help the district maintain current programs and services by supporting a $1 million referendum? Our probably yeses and our yeses are usually people that are going to vote yes. And about 20 to 30 percent of your undecideds are going to vote yes. Statistically, we see that all across the country when we do these.
I do want to say that we are all Minnesota nice, though. And undecideds are people that won't do it. Usually don't, they won't know, they just don't want to be mean. So that's what we get for living in a nice state. Most people, we just put that in there. So at least put something in there.
Great. So you'll see, any, whatever types of referendum questions you're exploring, those are the questions we ask towards the end of the survey. And then we ask kind of a final question. What advice would you give the board in regards to future planning? Consider holding a referendum, you know, for these things. Do not hold a referendum. That's, you know, if you get something back that 60 to 70 percent, do not hold a referendum. Well, you may want to listen to that, because I'm guessing if you go out for a referendum, you're not going to be successful.
Now, once we have gathered all the information and the survey has closed, we generally have surveys open for a good two weeks and three weekends. We launch it usually on a Thursday or Friday. Then people have three different weekends. And we have the ability, we have the contact information. We work with the school districts and get the emails. And so we know who has not filled out the survey. So we have the ability to go after those people in a nice way, just as a reminder, because we know they haven't filled out the survey based on their codes. And we have, like I said, our really good programmers that know who haven't filled the survey out. So we really remind people two more times, please take the survey. It's very important as we go, move forward, blah, blah, blah. So we always get good jumps. And by the way, we, our surveys get an average of 20% return rate, which is excellent. Sometimes if it's a real hot issue, we go up to maybe 30% of people will fill the survey out, which is really an outstanding response rate. Now, when the survey has closed and it's time for us to go back and gather the data, we fill out, write reports and then we come back to present the data to you guys. And this is an example of one of the, of a report that we provided a school board, results of a survey. As you can see, they were asked about an operating referendum to maintain the services based upon a $25 tax impact. And you can see that, you know, who knows where these guys go. But resoundingly, it came back as a strong support for the school district. And so, and the ballots, they did pass by, I think it was right at 64%. By the way, we have also found that the people that fill out the survey are the same people that vote. So that's why our survey information, our data is very spot on. So that's an example. And here's another one, where this is a technology upgrade referendum. And again, 67% voted, supported yes. And that was the number that came on the ballot as well. That percentage that it passed for the school district. So just wanted to conclude with just a couple of very happy people, the happy customers that were very happy with the work that we did with them. Just wanted to let you know that we have had school districts pleased with our services. So just wanted to put that in there. And that's Muleton Spicer.
And the word you'll hear over and over is predictive, that the results are very predictive, it would actually happen on a referendum. So you told great examples when I was meeting. You had a couple of districts where it came back really close or, and you gave them the suggestion of not going that year.
Right.
So that can happen too?
Yeah, but in that case, again, you know, my background is much more in strategic communications, is about, okay, what types of messages do you need to get out to the community? What do you need to spend the next year doing? How do you move so that every member of your community starts to understand, wow, they have got to do a lot with not very much? And, you know, what are ways, what are avenues we can get to those people? Because we'll ask a question about where you get your news. How do you find out what's happening in the school? And then you can use that information to really push your message of what's happening.
In the case, you're probably thinking about, last fall, we worked with about 34 different school districts and 31 of them came back in full support. And the three that, three went, one went, oh, well, we don't believe it. We think, we think it'll pass. We're going to do it anyway. And it didn't go. So that's really indicative of what they're saying.
I talked to that.
Yeah, okay, yes. And in this case, Paul Carlson, the Muleton Spicer school district did not survey the community and they went out to a levy and they did not pass. And so then after the fail, they contacted us and said, we got to talk to our community. And so we conducted a survey for them. And so now, now the district has a clear direction about what to do for their facilities.
I think the other example I shared with you, my home is in Onalaska, Wisconsin. Is anyone from the media here? I should probably, before we tell the story.
And when we went out for, okay, here we go. Quote me. When we did the survey in Onalaska, we asked about an operating referendum, a technology question and a capital. And the superintendent there, Larry Dalton, who was quartered on there, said, well, if operating would pass, we don't necessarily need the technology question. Well, the survey came back, yes, 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 we'll support all three. And so they went for the technology anyway, the past 70%. And so I always joke that, and I know you didn't really need the technology. You just knew from the survey you had the support. So my increased taxes do, thank you.
Well, last thing, here's a question that we get often is, how long does this whole process take? If, let's say, a school district is planning to go out, you know, how much far back do we need to start this process? The short answer is six to 12 months. And as Beth learned, we've had 11 days as a turnaround once. The school district said, go, quick, help us. Ah, we turned it around and got something for them. But we prefer a little bit more time, because the process of creating the survey is really, really important. We want to ask the right questions and then launch it, get the data, and then, you know, bring it back to the board to decide before they make a decision as far as whether they want to go out for a ballot or not.
And equally as important as your survey, I would just tell you that July, you know, when you look at your data and say, oh, these are going to be our talking points. These are the things people are confused about. This is our message. Spending August through that November vote, sharing, using that information you've learned from the survey to educate your community and push that get out to vote is super, super important. So could we do it on a survey on steroids and get you going? So if you decided you were going to go out in November of 2015?
Yeah, yeah. But it's a matter of time that we can't really, it is important, because there is that critical, critical time. I mean, just get the survey out, but then now, now then get the ball rolling as far as getting the word out to. So again, just being, again, we like to be inclusive. We like to include everybody in our surveys. We are absolutely, we're, our data's, the integrity of our data, because again, nobody can fill out the survey twice. And we are objective and unbiased, since we aren't being employed by a specific school district. So, anybody have any questions?
You know, many times when we've run referendums and like all districts run them frequently, we find that, well, we've been doing a lot of information over and over, in my opinion. And we have these town meetings and a lot of group meetings and people will come back and say, well, I didn't know enough about the information. Well, do you find that that is a common thread among districts to give them too much information?
But they didn't know, so they're saying they didn't know enough?[1643.94]
Even though you, you have fifteen or twenty meetings leading up to it and you provide them all kinds of information in relative terms to other districts and everything else, they simply say, we didn't know.
Yes, and communication always tests poorly as well, no matter what you do, you know, we could have, that's, you can never have enough communication out there, that's my best answer. Depends on what we'll do, like with our surveys, we'll find out who those people are because as Sue was saying, we ask your age, where do you live, blah, blah, blah. So we know who these people are that are, don't feel like they're getting a lot of information. So we present that to the school districts and say, okay, these, this pocket of people, this age group living in this municipality, they're not feeling in the loop. And so then that strategy is how, how can we best communicate with them? So, does that answer your question? I mean, the more, the more you do, the less, I mean, you can never do enough.
I think a great example of what he's talking about is, you know, we passed this beautiful bond, building bond and, and we passed, you know, built this gorgeous school and then we go back a few years later and go for an operating levy and people don't understand that those are two really different, you know, pockets of money and things like that. So even though we educate them all the time, the difference between the two, it still comes back to us that, well, no, we just passed a referendum. Well, it's different, it's a building, you know, so. And I would say, I mean, that's something I could sit with you and say, okay, do we, now that you've pulled your addresses for your direct mailing, do you identify two or three key points and you push out postcards? Are you talking to that population of younger voters or actually if eighty percent of the adult population is on Facebook? Have you built a district Facebook page that is pushing out simply just one fact a day that has just your talking point, you know, pushed twenty-seven different ways? Are you using YouTube? Have you created just short little videos? Remember, you know, most of the world nowadays has attention deficit and only really has thirty seconds to listen to what's going on, so.
Although Beth, I know in your newsletter, you pick a topic to talk about every, is it monthly, your monthly newsletter? And so I imagine you've shared that information too, so.
Our Facebook page is very active too. It's, it's almost daily, but they're more about celebrations and things. We want everyone to know that we have a math masters program and, you know, kids out in DC and all these things. So our Facebook page tends to be more celebrations, but yet I've had people say, and you can read it on there, oh, I didn't know we did math masters all the way down to fifth grade or something like that. And so we use it as a tool that way.
Right.
But certainly, we have hundreds of followers, thousands.
And what's so great about that, when you're going to referendum, I worked with a district that, we did a thirty-day push leading out to the referendum. I sat fifteen minutes and said, okay, we just loaded all those onto Facebook and they deployed every day at one o'clock. And you can read, you can load those and a school board member said, oh, God, you're so committed every day at one o'clock. And it was like, well, actually, you could freeze them.
Yeah, so that, what a great way.
Do it at one AM, that would be very impressive then.
Over receivers. So again, it's, how are you getting the message to people? Are they hearing it seven ways, seven different, you know, times? How are, you know, before they're actually going to learn the information?
With whatever the survey ended up saying, would you recommend using that same information for the following year? Let's say the survey came back, you know, sixty percent, no, you shouldn't go this fall. Would we re-survey next year?
You may do a shorter version of the survey.
But you wouldn't do this massive survey again?
Probably not.
Okay.
What we recommend is that if you're going to do a second survey, like we listened to you, that second survey has to have a couple, like a little bit of change to what you've done before. Because if you go out, got to know, and then go out and ask the same questions, kind of a thing, especially if pertaining to money, I, we wouldn't, you know, we want to, you want to give the impression that you've listened and we're, we're going to adjust the plan and then go out a second time. Certainly, some of the questions would be the same, so you can compare how you're doing, but probably want to make some changes next.
And if in that, in that, your survey, if some of the education pieces, we have no choice but to, if this doesn't pass and none of the but twos happen, then, you know what I'm saying? We're going to have to cut athletics, we're going to have to get rid of music, which we know can't happen. But if, if they don't feel it, if you say something's going to happen and then it doesn't happen, now you've lost some trust. So how we tell our story, and we spend a lot of time in that, that survey development time, talking about, talk to me, I ask a lot of questions. Tell me about this, tell me about your community. Would you do this? What about that?
The, the cost of your services is based on the size of the district or the?
Generally not, because, no, we're, it's a, wow, that's a tough question. It depends on how much is involved with programming the survey and getting the, getting it out and getting the mailing. So, you know, our costs, I think we provided a proposal for you there.
You all have a comp.
Yep, so it all depends. We've had some really small survey, school districts that we worked with and some really, really large, so.
Or like a survey that, we've had some that are one or two questions.
Right.
And they're like, one, two, back, done.
Yeah.
Which, those are, those are less expensive, but it's the coding and the piece behind, the work behind it. Yeah, the work behind the survey.
And you're finding that your surveys closely correlate the outcome of the referendums that you've done over the last couple of years or?
Oh, since we've now been closing.
You just can't step into, go from, say, we're not going to do phase one, go to phase two.
No, because phase one is when I ask all those questions. When you're in the hot seat, when I pepper you like crazy.
It's broken down, it's all or none.
Yep, yep. We've had some school districts that have said, oh, we're going to try and do our own survey, but then we want you to analyze it. And that doesn't necessarily work because we'll be able to disaggregate the data and say, these are your, if your school, this is what your school district employees are thinking. I will tell you, if your employees are not supporting a referendum, that is really challenging because they're the ones that are out there like, oh, my gosh, you're, ah, it's not a big deal, there's money everywhere. If there's any hint of that, that is such a challenge for a school district. If you know that seventy percent of your voters that do not have kids in school are not in support, you know, we can pull that apart in all those different populations. If you're eighteen to twenty-six-year-olds who don't have kids yet in school aren't supporting it, then we'd look at where are some other places on social media that we can get that population information.
On the cost, they're about half the price of the company you'll hear next time. That doesn't necessarily mean anything, but just keep in mind, it's, it's a little less than half, actually. And mainly that's because we already work with the financial institution, so they're not charging us for that piece. If we had to add on what Jeff is going to do for us, and there is some cost to that, but if we were to add that in, that's what doubles your cost because they're not our, you know, our financial institution. So for them to do a projection model, they have to get all those numbers from me or Josh, you know, it, it, it just, it adds on to the cost. So that's why I was really excited to see a company that could work with our current financial institution. I did call several of the, not references per se, I called people that I knew had done the survey and the superintendents were very, very excited about what you had done for them. Even one of them, it didn't pass and they were one of the groups that, they basically said, I don't, I don't know if it's a good time, I don't know if I would go for it. And they went for it and they still had good things to say. So the survey is a pretty good predictor of where we should be. And with this fall being a non-presidential year, we are going to be the only thing on the ballot. And just keep in mind that there's cost associated with that too, and so every penny matters. So I just really want to make sure it's the right time to go out this fall. If it's not, it's not. Maybe the survey would come back and say, we'll support technology a hundred percent. Maybe it'll come back, eighty-two percent support that. Well, then we look at those options, freeing up those dollars, and we spend over three-hundred thousand dollars in our three-year rotation on technology. If we could just free up that money, that, that opens up a lot of things too and maybe that's the route to go.
And remember, most people are going to take this, well, most people will take the survey online. So some will send it back, they're going to check in the little boxes, hold it up, put it in the little envelope, send it back to us out of our home office in Slinger, Wisconsin. But the other people will hop online and take it, but that survey still sits on your kitchen counter, right? And so those cute little charts and graphs and information and that cover letter that talks about all the cuts they've made. I mean, think of when you pick things up that are on your kitchen counter and you look at it again and it kind of strikes a chord. That piece, we've heard from people that took the survey and then I reread that, oh. So again, that messaging piece that we'll work really hard at. And then those will be your key two to three messages that you're going to use in all your talking points.
Any other questions?
If you've missed opportunity, let me shut this down here. There you go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Paul, if you have any questions?
Hey, girl. Be safe right now. You in the corner or the front?
I'm here. This is a custom.
I'm going to keep that sat that high.
This is great.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. This is not a discussion item for us, it was just a listening item.
Nope. Presentary.
Okay, public forum. Anyone have any information they'd like to share with the district? Any questions, concerns? Now is your time. Over. Finance report, attachment B.
Attachment B, your agenda packet. And this is just the light, quick summary version of what was possible for the cash flow for this month. And so what you've got here is the cash balance at North Bank, as we ran reports, we lowered two million dollars and you can see kind of inflow, also to expect through the rest of the month, May and June. They've got an estimated cash fund balance, cash balance at the end of June at a positive two million. An important part about that is it's cash, not fund balance, and that every fund is accounted for in there, other than your OPE. So you've got the food service, the debt service in those, in that cash figure as well. So we talk about fund balance, you're looking at under a million dollars in the general fund balance, anticipated cash. But the important to remember, that it will be positive flow for cash and not having any anticipation borrowing at this point, depending on how fiscal year sixteen budget goes and where we are at in terms of dollars there. Maybe looking at some anticipation borrowing next year after that service payment's come due at the end of January, beginning of February. But that's something we'll be working on, bring it together, put all the numbers together for next year. Important note, the Goodyear County and Dakota County tax revenue receipts, our estimates, haven't got those exact dollar amounts from the county yet. When those arrive, I'll update that with the exact dollar amount. This is probably a little conservative, but maybe a little more around the six seventy-five to seven twenty-five ballpark, reached the Dakota County fifty-five tolls. But a little conservative here. Again, this is kind of where we're at right now. And if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them if you have.
I see down toward the bottom that Inverge money. Explain that, would you please?
Yep. Because when Inverge came to town, we moved some tax payments to the city and schools. We've got a deal working out with Inverge. We get a portion of money, about two-hundred and ten thousand dollars from them directly. And then there's a city portion that has an inflation index associated with it. Involts average around three-hundred thousand dollars each year for twenty years that we're receiving from Inverge. It's basically a move of taxes from them. That amount, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand of that, we come for, paid for the elementary road lease. The rest, we'll get the general fund to help support general things within the school district budget. So a large, a very colorful elementary road project and then kind of, I use the rest to make interest of general budget activity.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I would like a motion to approve the finance report.
I'll make a motion.
Josh, I'll second. Josh made the motion, Kurt seconded. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Under new biz, we have some consent agenda items. And if you choose, we can pull out any of these individually and deal with them, or we can agree upon all of them. So if you just want to take.
Personnel is a separate list tonight. Just, just take a brief look at it.
That's the educational assistant to replace one of the resignations, or?
That's correct. Yep, she has worked for us before and coming back just to finish off the year, it's a perfect, we don't have to retrain her or anything, it's really a blessing.
Do you need to fill the other one then too, or is it?
We don't, we've worked some things out with teachers on call. They do our teachers and our parents.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Kurt.
Second.
Seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Prove of expenditures, that is attachment E. Anyone have any individual concerns? I haven't had much of a chance to look at them.
What, um, was it the, I think there's a charge for the sink, what was that?
It's the elementary.
Yeah, what happened? The sink was?
Well, it's a second place and actually, we're using wellness dollars to cover the facility. Our program and it's not going to be a cost.
Was it in the kitchen or something?
No. It's, the kids belong?
It's outside of the wings for the, yeah.
Oh, the wrong ones. Okay, gotcha.
The, of course, when I go to the end to, I'm pushing the name, but Electric Company doesn't put in the electronic.
Okay.
Kira Electric, four, four, three, four, nine.
It's good to have clean hands, Kurt.
I was going to say, it's good they didn't throw the kitchen sink in there.
When ready, I would look for motions. I'll make a motion to approve. Josh?
I'll second.
Motion, Rob seconded. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Item C, consideration to approve the twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen fundraising list, which is attachment G.
And you should have all gotten an email from Jake. Were you all able to read that prior to coming?
Yes, and that would be an add to where again? It's pizza.
It was pizza for girls' basketball. And they would actually like to start that.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. So I'd like to add that. Jake is coaching tonight, so.
We actually either have some cleanup or we have areas that people won't do this upcoming year.
Right, and you know, a good example is, you know, a charitable fund, Lynn Walter has done the Diabetes Walk for many, many years and Molly's gone on to graduate now and if someone came back, you know, that would be an opening for someone to come in and do something like that. But as of right now, we don't have an organization, which is okay, sometimes things come up, you know, that they want to do something with, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda to approve the fundraising list, which would include the girls' basketball side request.
I'll second.
Kurt has seconded. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration to approve the Sandstrom Fleet Services Agreement.
Well, as you know, we've worked with Andy Sandstrom for a long time. The first agreement that you see on here is for a mechanic. After meeting with Andy several times, obviously the district is looking at ways to save money and he always kind of comes to the rescue and so he is willing for this contract and the next one you're going to be looking at for that first year to do a freeze on salaries and for the, the agreement. The second year would be a five percent. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that go along with that. So his basic agreement, and there's people that are on that, on that, board members that are on that, so you can pipe in as well, but the agreement itself has not changed in language. If you have any questions, I can answer those or Mr. Sandstrom's in the room. It's a great deal for our district, that is for sure.
Andy, when you talk about you plan to lower costs by keeping most repairs in-house, is that substantial or is that, I mean, have any idea what that, something like that might look like percentage-wise and?
Um, this is a good example. In the last three months, there's probably been multiple vehicles that have been sent to the dealership for lots of things that we've spent a lot of extra time. I've actually, me myself, I've been wrenching, my guy's been wrenching, we brought a third guy under wrench and you guys don't get any extra. You guys don't have to pay for that. Just trying to keep up with these fuel over buses that we're having a lot of problems with.
Yep. Pretty good, yeah.
I love putting the military.
Yep, no, thank you.
The other thing too that I've noticed is, you know, if we do have any small fender benders, and those occasionally do happen, you know, people wind us or, you know, vice versa or anything like that, you know, a lot of times Andy is able to fix those, those things for us, so saving us a deductible on our insurance as well.
Okay, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Josh. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve Safe Link Transportation Agreement.
You know, we started this a couple of years ago with Andy taking over the drivers. This has been a really, I think, a better way to do things and to run things, ultimately saving us money and saving administrative time. The hours I was spending on transportation were enormous and this has taken it all off my plate, so thank you, Andy, he's very good to work with. Again, we are struggling to find drivers, but Andy has agreed to a freeze the first year and a four-point-five the second year, which again, is, is a great thing for our district, we can save some money for next year. So nothing else has changed versus, via language. The transportation reps, want to add anything, they're welcome to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Josh.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? You know, a number of years ago, when we started paring down staff to save money, this was one of the areas that I think was really a win-win for us because the district office does. does take a lot upon themselves with transportation, and that, although it isn't completely gone, it's disintegrated a lot, and if we'd ever have to go to the point where we'd have to take this back, we'd probably have to add staff. So, you know, it's always, there's always something going on with it, so... Andy, you've done a great job. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to set the upcoming board meeting dates as follows.
This is standard protocol, usually May, June, July, August, and September. We have one board meeting a month. If we continue to move forward with the referendum, obviously, there may have to be some work sessions and things like that in there, but you can work with your summer schedules and things like that. So, these are the dates that Lori has worked on and worked really well in the calendar. You know, the August 24th gets us really close to school, so that's perfect timing for any last-minute things. Also, any last-minute hires and things like that, we've had that happen, where had to hire people the week right before Labor Day. So, these dates work for us, and if they work for you, that would be good.
I'll make a motion to approve the dates.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the hire of a kindergarten teacher on a one-year contract, 2015.
I'm going to actually turn this one over to Derek, because he interviewed, but I do want to explain the one-year contract. There may be some questions with that. We have two positions that people are out on a one-year leave, and we want to make sure we don't have that transition time back and who's in, who's first. So, a couple of the people you're going to see even on the next board agenda are going to be one-year hires, and that's simply so that we don't have to get into that mess of laying people off and things like that, if the staff come back and they're on one-year leave. So, Derek, would you mind talking about our new candidate, our new kindergarten position?
So, we went through interviews, I think, early last week, and had some great candidates come through, and, you know, ultimately, we decided on Sarah Many, who is actually currently a preschool teacher, so should be moving over onto the, you know, kindergarten or elementary staff. So, we have an opening, obviously, there, but we're excited, kindergarten team is excited for her, and she actually just had a baby, so she's out on leave right now, but she's excited, and I think she'll be a good fit for us.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Josh? You're a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the Joshua D. Harrison.
We have an opportunity for another scholarship. I am going to take just a quick chance to read through what this one is entitled, because I thought it was worded so well. It says, "This new scholarship will be given to a senior who plans to pursue a career in related to sports or athletics. The recipient must be attending a two- or four-year college. The selection criteria will be strong character, leadership, school and community involvement, personal growth through participation in athletics, whether playing or managing. GPA, class rank, and financial need will be considered, but not final factors." And then they go ahead and write an essay on why they feel like they deserve this scholarship. And I, I just thought the write-up was really well done, so I wanted to read that. But this is a new scholarship for Josh Harrison.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Rob? Brenda? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carry.
The next one is a discussion on something Kurt brought up. I thought it was a really good point. I appreciate any time you bring up these items, because it gives me an opportunity to always be educating the board, and, you know, so many times I don't think we do that enough, because there's so many things that I could literally bring forward, and I'm always feel like I'm educating you on. But these are the kind of things, if you bring them up, we talk as a group, and then we can talk about it at a board meeting. Kurt's basic question, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, was, you know, he's doing a great job signing these books, and he comes in and he's always approving all these numbers, but sometimes you'll see money coming in and kind of like, where'd that come from? Where'd that come from? The sale of items, and it came up with our recent weight room transition, we had some older equipment in there that many people liked, but it was older, and we went through the coaches, and we went through the right system to do that. We talked to head coaches, I should correct myself, and said, "Do you want to go in the direction that Mr. Safe, Scott Safe, was running the weight program?" With that said, he was able to get a great deal on new weights that our athletes are using. In the state of Minnesota, I don't know if that many, this many schools our size have this many participants out for weightlifting. It's obviously a very big, big program. But I think the question that Kurt had, and again, I think he wanted to explain this a little better, was, you know, when we're disposing of old equipment, how does that work? And that's my part to kind of explain to you. If you look at policy 802, we have this in our school policy too, this is the MSBA model, ours is the same. Contracts over $100,000, you've dealt with this many, many times. Every time we go up for a bid on something, you have to do that. And then it gets down to contracts from $25,000 to $100,000. And again, that's where Lori gives you a lot of advice on which direction we should go on something. Then you get to D, which is contracts of $25,000 or less. That is up to the superintendent, and obviously, I'm always out there trying to get the very best deal that I can for anything that we may be selling. In this situation, you have to go out, you have to get two people at least that are interested in it. If you can't find a second company, say you were selling this pop can, and I can't find a second company that wants this pop can, I have to illustrate that I've attempted to sell it to another company. Scott Safe did do a lot of that legwork for me. He reached out to all the schools trying to sell the old equipment. We were thrilled to get the dollar amount, and I wish Jake was here, he would have all those numbers for you. We have to keep receipts. It's a very strict procedure, as you can see in here, and all of that was followed in this situation. But Kurt, maybe you could allude to where your concern comes in.
Yep, no, and what you're saying is good. Actually, probably maybe two questions with that is, is sometimes it'd be nice to see itemization of what was sold, and that's fine. I don't, Scott does a great job. He's a great coach. The other thing that is kind of going hand-in-hand with that is when we do these transitions, if you will, when we take the equipment out of the exercise, the weight room, and we make such a big transition, I talked to Josh about it a little bit this afternoon. What is, as a school district, is the school district and the community part of this weight room, like such as a fieldhouse, so that, you know, we've had some people come up and say, "You know what? I used to go in there at night, and now the benches are gone. I can't bench, I can't do that." And what happens is, the way it's set up is you have to have spotters in there now to be safe. So, with that type of transition, there's people that can't utilize it, and there may not be kids that can utilize it that are younger, that don't want to necessarily be in the weightlifting program, you know, but they're almost subjected to it, because there's nothing else there. I guess you have one, you have one bench, but if there's more people that want a bench, then it's not available. So, my question is, is it, if you're a member, or for a community member, are they considered that they can use this weight room as well? Is it part of the fieldhouse, or?
It's a great question.
You know, and these changes.
It wasn't designed for that. Our insurance isn't designed for that. It is really meant for the athletes, the athletic programs, anyone that contributes, like a athletic trainer. If she wanted to bring someone in, that would be acceptable, those kinds of things. It was never meant to be an open door, "Hey, come on in and use our gym." That was never the intent of it, nor really should it be, I don't think. You know, I think if we wanted to set up an alternate room, I don't know if I want students in there, a couple kids in there, because there's an adult in there. We'd really push not having minors in there. The community, older, you know, people our age weren't using it. It was students getting in there, and I'm just scared someone's going to get hurt or something like that. So, my understanding and the intent that everyone I've talked to is it was never designed for that. The fieldhouse, those kinds of things were designed for the community, and that has always been kind of locked. How people got in there, I don't know. Until we rekeyed, that's when people started complaining. I think you would be surprised how many people had old keys. Maybe not surprised, we talked about that quite a bit. The people that are angry had keys, and now they can't get in there at midnight to do their lifting. It was never intended for anyone to be in there working, working out like that.
So, basically that, go ahead, Rob.
I was saying, there used to be a fee, though, that you could pay as an adult.
Yep, yep.
If there's a fee to be paid, then why was it not designed for an adult to go in and lift?
We don't have that anymore, though. We got rid of it.
So, you eliminate that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it was initial.
With the old, old before, remember when the weight room was in that other area?
When it was there.
Okay.
I used to pay to go in, and there were a few key people that had a key. You had to coordinate with them, because you couldn't just walk in, but there always had to be them and you minimum. So, it wasn't an open-door policy by any means.
I can imagine that people probably had trouble with that. If you pay and you can't get in...
But it was known when you paid, and it was only $10 a month, that usually Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, I think it was like five to eight or something, six to...
Yeah, and that's fine, but, I mean, if you, we want that, we need to talk to Jake about that, or, you know, running that again.
Though, with that being said, it'd be almost unsafe to do that.
It would be now.
It would be now. So, then, that's something where we just have to decide as to whether or not it should be even considered open to the public, maybe, because if you don't have spotters, then you're at risk of...
I look at it this way, and we can all have our own views on it, but, you know, when hundreds of athletes, and some of them getting scholarships in weightlifting, or if they're out for wrestling and they're able to use that, and we've got safe, you know, weightlifting going on and programming going on, maybe there's 10, 15 people, maybe 20 people in the community that want to use that, but maybe a gym, a true gym, is a better place for them. You know what I mean? Versus what was going on here? I don't know.
Well, that's a good question, as to how it should be utilized then. Yeah, and with that question, too, then, is, is the program developed just for the weightlifting program, or can anybody go in there and lift any time, as students?
Student. Any student.
Well, I agree with my basketball kid in there, I have them in there to lift, and do it, I'm not the expert on the way that they do it, but I'd, I'd have to provide, just have, for baseball, they do for the program.
What if, what if? Yes, if someone just wasn't in sports, can they utilize that weight room?
They do, all the PE students have used it.
During PE, or, I'm saying after school, or do you have to be?
You cannot go in there.
You can't go in there if you're, and why is that?
You have to have supervision.
So, like, I'm just wondering if Scott's in there or something, if you're not, if Scott's in there and they're doing, say, the Olympic-style weightlifting, and if he's in there, can they be in there as well at that time, or does it have to be a...
There's a fee now with weightlifting.
Yep. Well, I understand, I'm just wondering, can a student go in and lift weights?
Dr. Mackey, Crash House, when they're in there, I think, they're more than worth anything, so...
It doesn't have to be Olympic weightlifting per se.
I think that's probably what they're...
Right. See, I think there's students out there that want to just lift, and they don't want to lift Olympic-style weightlifting. It's like, I want to go in, I want a bench, I want a curl, I want a shrug, I want a lat, you know, that's their gig. My gig's not powerlifting. I like access in there as well, and I guess that's my question, too. Can we allow those students in there, too? Is there time for them? Rather than just say, "Hey, you're either Olympic-style lifter, or you're not going to be participating." You know, you're either in basketball lifting for basketball, or wrestling lifting for wrestling, but I'm not, I'm not in a sport. Well, you should still have access to weight room if you want to be, lift weights, I guess. That's my concern, and I just want that...
Isn't this Monday, Wednesday, Friday in the morning, isn't that kind of an open gym?
That's what I'm wondering, that's my question.
It is, it's still...
Yeah, because I mean, kind of...
What's that?
Is there a charge for that now?
If you're in the weightlifting program, it is. If you come in the morning for strength training, if you're in any sport, you can do that.
The Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday will be...
Yeah, there's a charge for that, in the summer, because we're air conditioning it and turning on the lights and all of that.
Here's my question to back that up, then, what if my kid doesn't want to go in there at 6:00 in the morning to lift? That's kind of an early time, and also, but it's like after school, if I want to go in there, can there be an area for a kid to lift weights? 6:00 in the morning is an awful early time, and some people may disagree, but I think kids need to sleep a little bit, too. And I think after school is probably the best time for extracurricular versus 6:00 in the morning sometimes. I get it with sports and all that. I'm just saying, I think there should be access for these kids to also go and lift besides just 6:00 in the morning, you know, and that's my feeling, I guess. I think that they're paying money for it as well, and it may not be anybody, guys. There may be only one or two, but that one or two may have that, have the right to do so as well, and I don't know how many people are out there.
I talked to Jake, we have had not one complaint, which is unusual. My office is like, you should just call it the complaint office, and that's okay. I love that the public comes in. I talked to Jake, he has had zero complaints. I am a little concerned, and I hope you can convey this to people that have shown concern to you, it's really important that we know these things. I mean, no one has said anything. We can get the other weights back if we want, but no one's even said anything. I guess I'm going to take the recommendation of our strength coach. It's just like listening to our head football coach, or our math master league, you know, advisor. We need to really listen to what they're saying. He did survey every head coach. They did have big meetings on it. He came to me, we talked financials. He was able to get, you know, some money involved, so that there was really no cost involved, some cost, but compared to what they would have cost, I think procedurally, and again, per the policy, it was, it was covered to the T. I mean, we didn't make any errors in following the policy. So with that said, kind of going back to the chain of command, I really want to encourage our public to go to Jake, go to me. I mean, I like that they go to you, that you are, there's, you know, there are connections as well, but if we don't hear anything, I can't imagine that this is that big of a deal to that many students, but maybe it is. No one has said anything.
I guess even if it's not too many, even if it's several, I think if it's something that we've taken away, in essence, if nothing more than that, that one simple rack that's in there now, maybe that's enough, but I think they should be allowed time to be in there, to be lifting, even if it's, "Okay, guys, we're Olympic powerlifting, this is a group that's in here today. If you guys want to go out to the side and do some lifting, the weight room is accessible to you." You know, I know you're not in a sport...
So, who would we, who would supervise them?
Well, you know, I don't know, as long as they're in there, I would think there'd be some supervision, because I don't know if you can supervise 15, 20 platforms at one time either, you know, to be honest with you, I mean...
They have three coaches that do weightlifting.
Yeah, I understand, but you, people can, you know, if you make sure that you got the right spotters and everything, it used to do all the time. What's happened here is we've taken a program, and we've decided that we're going to go to Olympic-style lifting, which is great, but because of it, we've lost something. We've lost something to other kids, and that's, that's the issue at hand, and I don't know if it's something that we should look at a little bit more seriously, or, you know, because if they're coming to board members, they may not be coming to you or to the athletic coach, but they're coming to us, so there's still maybe a little bit of an issue there. And again, it may be one, two, three people, but that, that ability for them to go in and do that has maybe been taken away. That's what I'm saying.
I talked with Chrissy up at Snap Fitness, she says she's getting, she's heard kids are going to start coming up there now because they can't lift at school. So, the problem's growing up there, but I don't know about how many. But, I mean, it sounds like we almost need to redefine the weight room, or at least understand it from the public's perspective, as well as the school's perspective. We're charging for weightlifting, which is different. The equipment there is different. Supervision may be different versus what it was. When is it open? Is it open? Who's allowed, who's not?
Do you think that that's a school board thing?
I'm not saying that it is.
No, I mean, yeah, I don't know either, I'm just saying...
I'm just saying that it probably should be done. I don't know who would be the ones to do that, if that would be the district level or the building level.
We do have it very defined. If you're in weightlifting or in athletics, you use the weight room. It is very defined, because we have to have, for insurance purposes, an advisor in there at all times. We don't even have doors that are unlocked after 4:00 PM, you know, we don't have anything. We've talked about supervision in the, in the fieldhouse. I can't imagine opening that up. If we're already having conversations about that, can you imagine if anyone could go in there and lift? It was purposeful and it was planned the way that we did it. And it was to kind of eliminate, there was, there was people coming in at midnight and lifting. And you know who I'm talking about. And not that anything was wrong done, I don't know if I want people in our building at midnight. It was very purposeful. I guess if we talked about everything that, you know, Tim and I talked at the high school and Derek and I talked at the high school, I guess we thought we did it right.
So, no, and I, I, I agree with that. I, I think that that's kinda a little too much. I, I, I think I'm more to know with the kids and if, if you're basically thinking, and that's the way it is, that's the way it is. Are we thinking that unless you're in the weight program, you don't lift? You're not in the, the Olympic style of weightlifting program, then basically.
That's not your room.
What's that?
That's not your room.
It's not your room.
Well, I had, I had Scott use me as a non-lifter obviously and go through it. And he went through everything. The only thing is you do need a spotter, but every motion that you can do with the free weights, you can do with those weights as well. And he used me as an example, cause I wanted to understand it better. I said, we can't switch it over to one thing if I don't understand even what you're talking about. So we did that and he walked me through step by step and I'm sure he's talked, told you that.
This gets down into the mechanics of weightlifting and all that. I, I will say there's people that don't wanna do Olympic weightlifting and they wanna do bench curls, shrugs, pull-ups, all that, squats. And that's totally different. And so again, I'm just wondering is, do we say, look, you're either in the, the, the weightlifting program or you're not in the gym? Because that's, if that's the way it is, then that's something we need to set up too. Or else these kids have a, a right to be in that weight room.
What, what did we sell?
We had some older equipment that we sold, a couple bars to Pine Island, a couple things to Byron. They have new facilities and they wanted them in the corner for, what was that? I, I would have to go get my notes to do that.
I would get squat racks and clay benches and fly benches.
Anything, anything under twenty-five thousand dollars, the superintendent can sell those items. This was under five thousand.
I, I am in tune with all of that, but I, I do agree with these guys that I cannot believe that when we built that, that facility, we had exclusivity in mind for, for our, our athletes only. I, I just don't think that's a public school.
I seriously don't think it is that way though. Because if, I mean, if Joe, who's not in any sport, wants to go in and lift weights at, granted, it's six in the morning, but that's when the supervisors are in the weight room. That's when it's open for this guy who's not in any sports. He can go in there at six in the morning. He doesn't have to participate with the.
Is there anything after, after school? After school at all? Any, any programs for weightlifting in there?
I think that's kinda, isn't that more safe for this athletic, this athletic teams? I mean, to go in there and, you know, that's when Josh would bring the basketball team in for practice or something like that. You know, be part of practice.
And all summer, they can lift anytime they want through community ed. That way we know that a paid advisor is there at all.
So they're in there all day?
Well, not all day. I mean, there's hours, just you, you do it through community ed, just like you would sign up for band lessons or anything else through community ed. There's a specific time that that's.
The only thing that's weird is we sit here and we talk about coming in at six in the morning for everything. Then there's studies that show your kids need sleep and now they're getting up at five-thirty in the morning so they can go lift. And I, I think, I think we're, I think we're going the wrong direction that way. I think our kids after school is extracurricular activities and if they have an opportunity to lift after school, you know, we're, we're going, we're taking a lot of time for this and I, but I really think that, you know, if, if that's the way it's going to be, then we need to know that that's the way it is. I'm not so sure I agree with it, but like I said, if, if, if they're not supposed to be in there doing during the Olympic style lifting, then they need to know that, or at least maybe they can be in there during that time. Because if you got your people in there watching, you know, it's nothing to look over the corner of your eye. And I'm, I shouldn't talk to them, I, I, but can they be in there during that time too? I, I just don't think six o'clock is conducive for everybody out there and it, it just gets to be, our kids need sleep too.
Well, it's all good discussion. Again, again, I always thought when that facility was built, that was a community's facility in its totality. And all of a sudden it becomes more exclusive and this style of lifting apparently, I'm not a lifter as you well can see. But something has changed fundamentally since that was built.
I think it's been very positive because Scott and Josh, they're running an unbelievable program. I mean, they've got all these kids, except now we've got a problem and how do we address it? That's all.
They make purchases, you know, they're sounding boards for the district. They do a lot of good things. They, they sell our equipment for us through their contacts. All of it is really good, but I had no idea that we were just saying, stay out of this facility except for certain people at certain times.
I, you know, and that's where I ask Josh, is, if it's not allowed, if it's only in the morning, I don't wanna misquote anybody with this. That's why it's more informational. I wanna get an idea of what's out there. Can they lift during this time? Can they lift after school? Where we sit with all this, is there a way of making it work?
Yeah, cause you just feel listed people that had keys.
Can I, the, the discussion tonight was on the policy of disposal of, of equipment. That's my, my job, so I'll, I'll follow up on that. Would you like Jake to be in charge of following up on the?
Sure. Whatever they can come up with.
I'm gonna pass that over to him, cause I don't know enough about it.
It would really be nice to get our strength coaches in here. I mean, just, just a quiz.
I did invite all the coaches and everyone tonight.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
Everyone's busy though.
I know that they've got some opinions on this. They could really lend to us and make it all a lot more understandable.
Yeah, so like both the equipment changing and the supervision, there's two issues. The time when kids in our, out for lifting can be in there. What equipment, what equipment they, there is for them and supervision?
Well, you know, as kids and adults, I think that's slowly changing. When it was first opened up, there were more adult lifters, I think, than there are now. They weren't Olympic, they were more power.
Well, in the evening, I mean, we did have to have police called here in the evening. You know, there's, there's not people here and you're well aware of that. I don't want police here at night, you know, so I'm just trying to minimize and do my job to keep everybody safe.
I think the, yeah, the, the policy is solid. I don't think there's any reason to deviate from it. It's what it is. We approved it last summer, I think it's good.
I would just mention at the Goodhue Ed District meeting, that was last week, they're dealing with this too because they're, you know, building a new building for the district education office down in Red Wing here with the services. And so they're gonna, I don't know the name of the website, but they're gonna be putting a lot of their old equipment on a website so that the public can bid on the equipment. So I don't know if that's something that we wanna think about.
We, that's what we do. We have, you have to post things, like the playground equipment that I just sold.
Yep.
The Wassito stuff, you know, you can post all of that. You can do it, there's lots of options.
Is there a link to the website on the, on our webpage?
We haven't had anything big enough to do that. The things that I sold are small things, you know, like old sinks that no one wants anymore. Broken chairs.
It'd be nice to put that on the website so the public knows about it after it's open to the public.
Good.
Okay. Item J, discussion of extracurricular participants missing practice. Who wants to take the lead on that?
I'll take that one. That was something that we talked about last meeting and I wanted to visit it again. I'd gotten an email from Jake about it. And actually I got a, a visit from Coach Reskal this morning and I asked if I could mention his name today. He said, sure. We were confused about the first five minutes of the conversation, cause what he talked about, what I talked about weren't the same at all. His question to me was, why do you wanna create a policy that's across the board on all sports? And that wasn't what I was talking about. It was to remove the policy of if you miss a practice, you will not start the next game. So Coach Reskal, it took us five minutes of discussion or so to figure out, we were talking opposite ends. We were, he figured it was a telephone thing where it started off as one thing and ended up being something completely different. Cause he was the exact, he goes, if that's what you mean, a hundred percent support you. And he was gone. That's all he wanted to say was, I don't believe a policy like that needs to exist because I'll handle it one-on-one with my kids as I need to. I don't need a policy that says, I can't start you if I want to. So he was in support of removing the policy. And I sent out to a couple of the school districts that I know, the board members. I didn't wanna bother anyone else. And Goodhue had a good response. Goodhue's coaches generally do not have the policy like this for one. We don't want undue pressure on a kid who is sick to come home, to come to school and practice when they should be getting better. However, coaches are aware that kids do miss multiple days or patterns develop with absences and have made decisions regarding starting or playing time. And of course, any student has gone from practice, they're missing instruction, fall behind, which will affect their standing. So no policy, but it does factor in the decision coaches make regarding their lineups and minutes. Hopefully this helps. And really, I guess that's really what I was looking at is, you know, to have a policy, kinda ties a coach's hands. You've got a kid who gives a hundred and ten percent every day of the week and then one practice, he can't make it for whatever the reason is. You're gonna have to sit, sorry.
And is, we have a policy like that set in stone that goes across the board?
No, it's individual coaches that may have that policy or may not. And I'm just, again, I go with academics over sports. If, whether it be for academics, death in the family, sickness, whatever it is, just let that be a discretion of a coach. Not a policy that's been set up and followed for years. And the one example I gave was, there were three kids that were going to Math League. Every Monday night to compete, they'd have to sit the Tuesday game because of it. And that was academic wise. And when I gave that to Coach Reskal, he goes, they, they'd start? I'm like, no, they can't for the policy. So again, my thoughts are, as a district, and I'm not trying to instill a policy on a coach, not trying to make a policy. My request here would be more of, I don't think that's a policy as a district, we really want or support. Where we put in writing, for whatever the reason, you miss a practice before a game, you're not starting.
So when you, I'm a little confused because when you throw out the term policy, it means to me that we've got something in writing that deals with that. So what we have is a handbook that says, if you miss a practice.
Practice before game.
Okay.
You will, you will not start that next game.
That's in the student handbook or a coach's handbook for each team or?
Can I, what, what sports, is, is there any sports that do that? You, you must know some.
Well, it had to have been basketball a few years ago. And our coach said, we don't have it. But I thought, I've seen it in there.
My policy says, I already have one that's for, mine is family faith, academics, basketball. Kids were missing the night before, who had to skip the family. I don't know that that said it would be a start rule or not, but a lot of times they're in the preparation the night before a game. For instance, for me, Byron game, we gotta beat badly the first two times. I'm not gonna do the same in the clear time. We change a lot of things. If a kid were to have missed that practice, is unfairly fourth round court with that person that was there. So there might be preparation things. I generally don't penalize for an academic, I mean, it's been prepared.
Okay, cause I've seen in, and I'll have to pull up the handbook then that, with the policy. That's where, everybody, you know, Jake was saying, let the coaches make that policy. It's an individual case by case and I'm going, why, why should we allow that?
I wouldn't, and I understand what Rex was talking, once a year, I understood that. I don't wanna have my hands tied here.
Well, exactly, that's what my point was.
Kid misses the practice, but because it's, you know, a very legit reason or whatever it may be. I don't want my hands tied that I can't play.
Right.
Cause when the coaches got together in this room and Jake brought in all the head coaches, they couldn't quite figure out what you were talking about, cause none of them had that. Like, so maybe we need an example before we.
Oh, that's fine.
That would be, thank you, Rob, that would be great. At least it would give us something to kinda, here's an example of, so we can, you know, make sure that, make sure it's not happening.
Yeah, I was, I was the same with Beth on that, sorry, Rob. I was the same with Beth on that. I didn't quite understand where we were gonna go with this because I just, I would really resist this legislating to our coaches, how they should individualize their practices and games based on, you know, what's occurring. You know, I use my own example of being a crummy student who didn't like to go to practice. I could raise my hand and say, gotta go home, study.
But you're probably not starting anyhow.
Yeah, well, for sure.
You know, so I'll tell you what to thank you, that's where in the last meeting.
But the point is, if I was good enough to play and there was something in place that says, no, you have to start, you know, because academics were more important. Even though, even if my folks backed me up and they wrote me a little excuse that I was home doing math, I might not have been.
Right.
And so not, I wasn't really comfortable with the, with the direction that we're gonna, we're gonna tell coaches what to do. That was where I thought you were going.
I thought I was clear, but I guess I wasn't. No, I wanted the policy that's out there and again, it's in certain handbooks. Not to support that if you miss a practice, you're, you're not starting. And that was no excuses. And again, I'll have to check the handbook and see where I can find it.
That would help, thank you.
We probably got it in the handbook. We've got coaches who don't adhere to that because they think it's, well, for one reason or another, not good for them.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Reports, board members? Anybody like to comment on the work session, which we went for two plus hours?
Josh has a lot of tasks to do since he wasn't there. You know, there's a couple of things I've broken down. One is, I think we put three goals together from the district level for the superintendent review. Crazy as it sounds, we can't, have you? No one's located the superintendent job description.
As far as I know, I've always, I've always used the MXPA model one, so.
So we're going to be creating one for Cannon Falls. Josh, I'll do a subcommittee and then bring it to everybody and get everybody involved, so that'll be our task.
We nominated these two to do that. Since Josh wasn't here. And abstaining is what happens.
She's seen everything else that they were trying to get you to do.
Yeah, a little light referendum discussion as well there, just to get everybody's input and direction as to timeframes. So.
Good meeting, actually. You have something for us?
I do. It, it's from Dave. Last Thursday morning, I usually get here right around six. For whatever reason, that morning I was here at five forty-five and walked into a distinctive smell of smoke. I immediately called Dave. He raced out of bed and came straight to Cannon Falls. Bruce was here right at six. We couldn't find, figure out where the, the smoke smell was coming from, but there was no actual smoke. And I was concerned, I called in the school nurse. We got the list of students that have asthma and things like, I just wanna make sure because it smelt like smoke, but we couldn't quite figure what it was. We had a company come in today and they have found, and Rob, you were CC in this because of facilities. They did go through an investigation and it was determined that our domestic water recirculation pump is mounted in an effect that the oil supply that requires needs to be up. This has been dripping for some time. It's mounted sides, sideways and is unable to hold oil. This caused it to fail, okay? Then there's this picture of a pipe covering the mezzanine up in the, in the auditorium. That's where the distinct smell was coming from. And basically what's happening, if you see this, and he gives me the word here, I apologize, he should, glycol is what's causing this, so they need to change out the insulation, get this mounted differently. We got a quick quote of three to four thousand dollars. I think I can do this. If this, this needs to be done ASAP, like tomorrow. If it was to go over five, is it okay with the board if I move forward with that? I will get a second opinion, I promise. This won't be one company telling us this, but my limit to spend is five. If it was just to go a hair over and this needs to be done immediately, I'm not looking for a motion or anything, but maybe a nod ahead, go ahead, Beth. And I'll certainly send out an email as soon as I know.
Is that five for both or five for each?
The whole thing. We could, he's, actually the words he uses here is three to four thousand.
Pumped one of them? Well, he's the other.
But these are just some of those things that happen. We have used up our facility money, obviously with boiler stuff. But the sale of the equipment, the playground equipment, I think we can put back into facilities and pay for this with that. So I've got an avenue to pay for it.
So was the pump installed wrong?
Yes.
Originally, yes.
So, and that, that's how long ago?
Oh seven. I checked out, there is no warranty locked on that. Dave didn't think there would be either, but I checked.
Is there a warranty even though it was installed wrong? It would, that warranty would be null and void and that the company should be.
Labor's only good for about a year.
Even if it's installed improperly by their company?
It should've been caught in the final commissioning. If it's not caught in the final commissioning, it is null and void. These things happen though too, so this needs to be fixed. We'll get going on that tomorrow. I just wanted you to be aware of it, so if you see it in the.
I would just hope we could plug into facilities on that. If it goes slightly over, why don't you just run it through facilities?
Sure, keep going with Jerry and Jerry, Rob, you bet, you bet, I can do that.
Okay, we have no student to report to us.
I would just throw out the Ed Foundation had a very successful auction fundraiser Saturday. And thanks to everyone for attending that and supporting the Ed Foundation. I don't know how much they raised, but I think they had a good turnout and so I think it was.
It was a fun night.
It was a good, so.
Very nice.
That's very nice.
Thanks Brenda.
Student report, we have no one here, so we will defer that for an upcoming meeting. Our next scheduled board meeting is May eighteenth. And you see the list of things we've got going below, so it's not as busy as the books we can add.
No, yeah.
So, anybody has anything more for discussion?
One thing, Kurt, I think you brought it up. I see fall head coaches on for the next meeting. Did we ever hear about the, did we ask about?
The goals and purpose?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, Jake's not here tonight.
I'll add it to Jake's list and send out that email.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great.